We have insurance and we can get the city named, you know, however, however you guys would look for it.
So that's not an issue. And I think the only other two things would be what type of, what type of prep and what type of cleanup would you need from our Department of Public Works? And we would have to figure out the cost for that. So this is Jack Farr. He's the director of our Department of Public Works. The chief is not here. Bill Warden, you would want to speak with both of them so that they could have an idea of what it would take for setup and what they might need during your event. They may not need anything and then the cost is very minimal.
Sure.
Obviously, the more you need, the more it might cost us.
Well, sure, no, I understand that. And I kind of looked at this as the first step that I'd come back down and meet with anybody, okay? And find out what we need to do. Port Jervis is a nice town.
Thank you.
My only question is basically what you would need is the city to provide space and you would run the event?
We would run the event, yes, okay. Now, we don't need the city to do any of that. You know, probably garbage pickup, okay? Although most of our, most of the meetings we go to, you know, things are in the garbage cans and, you know, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of garbage pickup. And a little bit of preparation, I'm sure we could use some help putting up tents and stuff like that that we would be glad to reimburse the employees for or however you do it, okay? We, our goal is to make this, to make this work for both, both the city and for us, okay? We're not looking to make any money on it, okay? We're looking not to lose money, okay? And, you know, I mean, this is, this is something we put on, put on for our members, okay? And, you know, we, we have, we have 44,000 members in New York State, you know? Sometimes a ton of them show up, sometimes, you know, hardly any. It just depends on, on what's going on and what the weather is. And that's why we've been planning them later and later in the spring so that hopefully we get some decent weather.
I think it's great that you want to bring a thousand or so people to our fine city and bring the rain with you. I think both of those are.
No, we don't want the rain that day.
Good for us, but we've never had an event, an outside event like that. We typically have church events and things like that, community days, national nights out. And sometimes there's thousands of people. I'm sure that that property can suit all your needs.
Oh, I'm sure. I looked at it. I think it's, I think it's ideal, okay? And one of the things you're, you're going to find out about us when you meet us is that we are a family oriented organization, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be moms and dads and grandparents with their grandkids and their kids. This isn't going to be a lot of crazy yahoos out there. We don't have any crazy yahoos, okay? That's a, that's a figment of everybody's imagination.
We do. Sit right here.
I've been there too.
Is it a multi-day event or a single?
No, it's going to be a single day event, okay? We'll probably start somewhere around 10:00 in the morning, 11:00 in the morning, open it up. And if it works the way most of our events do that are, that are outside, there will be a steady stream of people through it all day long. There may not be, there may not be, you know, 500, 600 people there at any one time. But we held one on Long Island, you know, and, you know, the bastion of freedom of the Second Amendment, okay? And we had, we had over a thousand, a thousand people come through, come through the door in a, in a six-hour period. Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming something like this outside with a, with an outdoor show and some, you know, and some training, training things, you know, fly tying and all of that. Though we'll probably, we'll probably get more, okay? But I can't promise you anything until the, the day and the weather and find out what the weather is.
The reason I, I'm sorry.
I just want to ask the council, is there anybody that has reservations on the event idea itself?
No, the event idea itself, I mean, it fits perfectly with our area. We have the river, we have hiking, biking, boating, hunting, fishing. We have everything that you have.
That we do.
We just want to make sure that we get all our ducks in a row.
Oh, absolutely.
No, pun intended.
No, no, in.
Well, if they're in a row, you get it.
Yeah, that's right on target, that's right on target, okay?
That was a cheap shot.
I think you. You know, this keeps alive all night.
You guys are well-trained in this.
Yeah, the, we, we don't want to be associated with, with anything that's less than a first-class operation, okay? I want, and this is totally off the subject, but I sat here early in the meeting and listened to you talk about taking down derelict homes to make the, the inner city, you know, better. Every city in New York State should be doing that. I live, I, I live in the Louisville town called East Greenbush, which is outside of Albany. In Albany, there are currently 176 derelict pieces of property that nobody wants to do anything about. I give you guys credit for doing that. I think that's just outstanding. Does anybody have any other questions?
The reason I brought that question up was that we have a wealth of history here.
Yep.
The Indians, the Roland Bridge, the Never Sink Battlefield. And so maybe in your invitation or literature or whatever, you might want to indicate that there is a lot of history here and we can get you all the places to visit and maybe some of the people might want to spend more than one day in, in sharing that.
Be glad, be glad to do that. We, we did that on Long Island when we were down there last year. The year before that, we were at Poughkeepsie and we were at the Poughkeepsie Civic Center. Was that Poughkeepsie Civic Center? And I think we had somewhere around 700 people show up for that and about, about a third of them stayed, stayed overnight in hotels. So I just don't know, I can't promise you that's going to happen, but there will be people staying here and there will be people coming in their campers as well, so.
Oh, two other things that you might want to mention is that we will advertise it in the magazine. And the other one is that the Orange County Federation of Sportsmen have agreed to back us and help us put on the event.
Yeah, this is not going to be just a, you know, a, a single event. We will have people that are working with us that, you know, our local people, you know, that will, that will make sure that it can go out good because when we leave, we want you guys to say, you know, we're okay. Yeah, come on back, you know? That's what we want, that's our goal.
So if I could, if I could ask for your organization to meet with Jack and the chief and maybe our corporation counsel just to finalize any of the issue of the things that you need, I, I believe once that, that is settled, we can move forward.
Oh, let's set it, we'll set a date, okay?
Sounds great. Yeah, and our recreation director.
Sure, sure, you know, I, I have no problem.
You my daughter, Tom?
Yeah. I have no problem doing any of that. And I, I mean, that's the way we usually, we usually do things. We come in, you know, we, we appreciate being able to use your facility. So if there are certain things that we have to do in order to use your facility, we'll do them. I mean, that's just the way it is. I mean, within reason, okay?
Because you're a straight shooter.
Are there going to be any like target shooting or anything like that?
Uh, no, we can't do that over there. We can't do that over there. No, no, we can't do that over there. We might, might be able to do bow and arrow, okay? That's something, that's something we'll look into. Maybe we could set up some kind of archery instruction for kids, you know? I'm sure there are people around here that would like to do that. You know, there's, there's, and believe me, we're open for ideas, okay? We want this to be a, we want this to be a big event for us for, that we could put it here, we could broadcast nationwide that we did this. And also, we want it for you to draw, to draw more names.
And the sooner, the sooner that you can meet with them, the sooner you get the date and the sooner we can really start.
Well, I thought the date may have been agreed on, May 20th, was that okay with you or?
Yeah, that, May 20th, I forgot about that, yes. Yeah, that's okay.
Tom, I have a question. Will there be any vendors up there selling firearms?
Um, we don't know. That's something we're going to have to discuss, okay? What we have done, what we have done in the past is we've had vendors there who sell firearms, but there was no sale on the property, okay? You could come and look at it and go back to, go back to their shop and buy, you could do a deal there. You could pick up the gun and look at it, okay? But we were not selling any on the property. I, and that's okay with us, you know, I just.
Do we still need to go through our city insurance even though they're providing? Okay, so we still need to fill out that.
So Robyn's listening to that, so I know I'd fire off an email to her tomorrow saying, make sure that if we can do this or we can do that. There you go.
Just shoot it over to Maria.
Shoot it over, all right?
It was somebody else's card.
I will call them.
But this is, I'm also on the board of directors of the NRA and that was what that was.
So that was just a ricochet.
You're not missing any opportunity, are you?
No, that's me. I have a reputation, I have to.
That was off, that was off target, I'm sorry.
Well, if the council doesn't have any more questions, I think we, we're down to where we, we need to be. We finalize some things and we approve the date and within the next month and we'll be ready to go.
Okay, okay, yeah, and, did you get one of my cards?
No, you did not.
Okay. And, you know, plumbing and whatever you can set it up and, you know, give me a couple of days and all this and it's only two hours, I can, I can be down here.
We'll shoot you a line. I just.
I love you.
Mr. King, thank you very much.
Is there anything else before I go? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
My name's George O'Hara, I'm from Washingtonville and I just, I'm not on the board of directors or anything with New York State Rifle and Pistol. I, I am a member and I've been to, I don't know, 10 or 15 annual meetings. The crowds are great, everybody's there to, you know, get along and have time. And Tom does an excellent job, Brenda does an even better job of making sure everything's coordinated and everything's where it's supposed to be and, and after everything's over, everything's cleaned up. So I've never seen any problems there and that I know, that I know of, so. Rest assured, they'll be able to, to do a good job because, you know, they want to do a good job for us, the members also. And like you were saying, and bring the people here. And we have people from all across the state that do come here and, you know, some people from out of state. And people do, they bring their kids and their grandkids and all, all those other things, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not hearing any? I appreciate it, thank you very much. That's fine, I totally understand, you got to drive back. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion for the approval of the September 12th minutes. Motion by Mr. Belcher, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Randazzo. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention, Mr. Bovoso? So carried. Committee reports, finance and insurance, Ms. Trobe.
Finance. The finance committee last met on Wednesday, September 21st. We reviewed cash flow and cash flow is tight. We reviewed the preliminary budget and it seems like it's going to be a problematic budget year, but we are working on it. We have been recently officially designated as fiscally distressed, so. We're fiscally stressed.
It makes us distressed.
In case you didn't know that already. We will be conducting a utility audit and the city will receive 60% of recovered funds, so that's a positive possibly. The next meeting will be Wednesday, October 19th at 6:45 here in the council chambers. I think everyone should have received a copy of the meeting minutes for the past two, finance. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve them.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bovoso, a second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
We have some bills that need to be paid from the general fund, $265,471.79, from the water fund, $33,972.67, and from the capital fund, $63,061.61 for a total of $362,445.7. Some of the larger bills, general and water funds, Orange and Rockland August usage, $23,864.45, Bonadito and Company for audit work, $26,500. Card member services for monthly charges, $5,674.10. From the capital fund, Pantel Electric Water Clarifier, $29,631.15. Tapco Solar Crossing units, $13,906.16. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Trobe, a second by Mr. Bovoso. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I also have a resolution that I have to read because I don't think anyone has seen this yet. This is regarding the standard workday and reporting resolution for a New York State retirement system benefits. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council recognizes the need to establish a standard workday for all elected and appointed positions within the city for a New York State retirement reporting purposes and to satisfy reporting requirements to the New York State retirement systems with respect to time worked, is hereby resolved and reaffirmed that the common, common council of the City of Port Jervis hereby establishes a standard workday of eight hours for all employees, elected and appointed officials. And it is also resolved that all employees, elected and appointed officials who participate in the New York State retirement system are required to submit time sheets of actual time worked and/or shall complete record of activities logged for at least a three-month representative time period and submit same to the city clerk for reporting purposes. I'd like to make that a motion.
So moved.
Oh, time's up.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, a second by who? It's wrong, Ms. Randazzo. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And I believe that's it.
Thank you. I just missed, when is the, your next meeting?
Wednesday, October 19th at 6:45.
Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Belcher.
No.
Mr. Siegel.
Mr. Siegel, why does it say that?
Thank you. There was not, no Fire Emergency Management meeting minutes for the September 8th meeting due to no quorum again. We did have an informal discussion and notes will be distributed hopefully this week. I just didn't get to them. A lot of things were discussed, so when you get the notes, just look at them as if they were minutes. The fire department made a verbal request to use Five Spring Street across the street here for fire training because it's not often that we are able to get into an actual building before it's on fire. And an actual building often presents situations that you don't normally get in an environment that's designed for testing purposes or training purposes. So I'd like to make a motion to allow the Port Jervis Fire Department to use Five Spring Street for fire training prior to demolition of the building should that occur. And we, we would like to request inspection by the buildings department prior to that training based on a, a request of the mayor, so I'd like to make that a motion.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, a second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. And that'll come at the time when, when it's being prepared in the form.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
And just let us know when that is.
We'll, we'll check with our insurance company.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You made a motion and Mr. Belcher made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much. The next meeting, Fire Emergency Management, is scheduled for Monday, October 17th at 7:00 PM right here in the council chambers. Excuse me. And watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and our webpage, PJNYFD.com for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And that's all I have, thank you. Oh, wait, no, I have, I have correspondence from the secretary. Apologize for that. Honorable Mayor Kelly B. Decker, members of city council. Our E. Appointment of Probationary Driver, Jessica Furman. Is hereby requested that blow-named firefighter be approved as probationary driver for the company stated. Jessica Furman, Delaware Engine Company number two. Attaches a copy of the firefighter's driver's license solely issued by the state in New York. This information has been entered into New York State Department of Motor Vehicles License Event Notification Service. The service will notify the department upon expiration, renewal of a driver's license, the suspension, revocation, or restoration of a driver's license, changes to a driver, license class and privilege, traffic convictions, reportable accidents, driver license suspensions, or revocation orders, completion of a training course to reduce insurance premiums, changes to hazmat license endorsements, and changes to med cert status. This request was approved by the Board of Officers on 9/12/2016. I make a motion, we approve that.
Second. Motion by Mr. Siegel for probationary driver twos, a second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Appointment to the water's operation team, Bryce SOTELO. Dear Mayor Decker, members of city council, is hereby requested that blow-named firefighter be approved as a member of the water operations team. Bryce SOTELO. And I spelled that out because I made a mistake on one and I'm still hearing about it, so I'm being very careful. Politically correct. Delaware Engine Company number two. This request was approved by the board of officers on 9/12/2016. I make a motion, we approve that as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bovoso to approve Bryce SOTELO to water operations team. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so carried.
Sorry. Event, Mahagamak Hook and Ladder number one. Is hereby requested that Mahagamak Hook and Ladder Company number one be approved to participate in the following event. Live burns the Orange County Fire Training Center on 10/2/2016. This request was approved by the Board of Officers on 9/12/2016. I make a motion, we approve that as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bovoso for hooks to go to a live burn on 10/2 for Orange County. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Another event, Howard Wheat Engine Company number four. Dear Mayor Decker, members of city council, is hereby requested that the Howard Wheat Engine Company number four be approved to hold the following event. Sausage and Pepper Takeout on 11/12/2016 from 4:00 to 6:00 PM by their auxiliary. This request was approved by the Board of Officers on 9/12/2016. I make a motion, we approve that as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bovoso to approve the 11/12, 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM Sausage and Pepper Takeout. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Removal of a member, Kevin W. Cutler. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, this is the request that the blow-named a member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and the company herein stated be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Kevin W. Cutler, Delaware Engine Company number two. Expelled pursuant to Article 7, Section 1 of their bylaws. Failure to fulfill duties as a member in Article 5, Section 4, allowing his account to exceed one year dues and fines. This change is effective this date. And that's a notification. I'd like to bring that up for a motion because I think they didn't put the box.
Motion to remove a member from host two. Motion by Mr. Siegel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bovoso. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Another removal of a member, Joshua D. Jacobs. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, this is the request that the blow-named a member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and company herein stated be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Joshua D. Jacobs. Mahagamak Hook and Ladder number one, non-payment of dues. This change is effective immediately. I make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, a second by Mr. Bovoso to remove a member from hooks. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Removal of a member. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, this is the request that the blow-named a member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and company herein stated be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Victor Valentin Jr., Never Sink Engine Company number one. Voluntary resignation, joining another department. This change is effective this date. I make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bovoso to accept the resignation from engine one. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Removal of a member, Dennis W. Simmons, excuse me. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, this request, this is the request that the blow-named a member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and the company herein stated be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Dennis W. Simmons, Excelsior Engine Company number five. Passed away this morning after a battle with cancer. This change is to be effective immediately and I make a motion and we accept this with deep regret.
Second with regret.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Belcher. With regret, removal from Dennis Simmons from Engine Company number five. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And we've reached a bomb in a pile. Dear Mayor Decker and members of city council, the Port Jervis Fire Department proudly has serving within its ranks, 181 dedicated members, approximately 54% of our membership, who will be celebrating 25 years or more of active service in 2016. Seventeen members celebrating your anniversary in September in respective companies are: Never Sink Engine Company number one, Robert G. Mason with 61 years. Robert J. Mills with 46 years. David C. Smith with 49 years. Delaware, Delaware Engine Company number two, Richard Galway with 52 years. Rocco Petito with 48 years. Valley Rescue and Savage number three, Michael Hill with 37 years. Anthony Savino, Savino Jr., 45 years. Apologize to him. Excelsior Engine Company number five, Vincent J. Atkinson with 36 years. George Fuller with 54 years. Michael Swingle with 30 years. William R. Werner with 42 years. Tri-State Hosts Company number six, Gustav Doobies with 66 years. Robert Spradling with 34 years. Mahagamak Hook and Ladder number one, Eugene Hughes with 45 years. Wayne Kidney with 25 years. Robert Peterson, Pearson, I'm sorry. Robert M. Pearson with 54 years. And Robert J. Warden with 36 years. And as respectfully submitted by William Werner for informational purposes. And I'd like to thank them on behalf of the council for the service they're giving. That's all I have on that, thank you, Mayor.
All done with Fire Emergency Management?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Code and Legislative, Mr. Bovoso.
Code Committee has not met since our last meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 5th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Carriage and recycling will be on a normal schedule for the next two weeks. Please be advised that the City of Port Jervis Bulk Waste Truck and Compost pile will be open every Saturday from 7:15 AM until 11:30 AM at the City Landfill located on Canal Street. Be advised that a $10 dump coupon is needed to be allowed to dump bulk waste in our truck and can be purchased at the city clerk's office located at 20 Hammond Street here at City Hall. Bagged yard debris and tied-up brush will continue to be picked up on the same day as your paper pickup on Fridays. Tied-up brush must be in tied bundles no longer than 12 inches. Be advised that your yard debris can be put in cans that are 35 gallons or less. The next DPW meeting will take place on Monday, October 3rd, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Committee met on September 20th. And an update, the late-night crowds on Friday and Saturday nights around the bars have subsided. More officers will be more visible now that school's back in session. Officers will be getting up-to-date defensive tactics training pretty soon. Police Department is looking at purchasing more rifle.